Hey, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM, August 21st, 2024, Willow City Hall. So, can I get a pledge of allegiance? I'm gonna go ahead and do that. Okay, roll call.
Chair Bob Dya.
Present.
Vice Chair Ehorn.
Present.
Commissioner Myers.
Present.
Commissioner Valencia.
Present.
Commissioner Bra. Everyone's present.
Alright, any changes to the agenda?
Nope, I'll note that we don't have minutes for the approval of this meeting. They're still getting worked on, so we'll have those available at the next meeting.
Thank you. Alright, moving along, public comment consent calendar forum. All matters on the consent counter are considered routine are approved by one motion, and vote unless commission members or the city planner first request that a matter be removed for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address the commission concerning consent counter items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the chairman and commission members and not to staff and/or the audience. By state law, the commission is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentation you would like to sue to the commission, please mail it to the city planner at 201 North Laxton Street, Willow, California, 95988, or email to vturner@citywillow.org. No public. Okay. Public hearing. All matters in this section of the agenda are formal public hearings and will be acted on individually. Once the chair opens the public hearing, members of the public may request to speak when you're called on by the chair. Please say your name clearly for the audio recording. If you have any documentation that you would like to be distributed to the commission, please give it to the city planner for distribution. We're going to go to A use permit file number UP-2204A/125 Willow Streets.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. This is for file number use permit 2204A. It's an amendment of an existing approved use permit at 125 Willow Street to add a commissary to the site that currently is the location of the Taco Zell Norawa Food Facility. Location is up on the screen there. It's a largely vacant lot off of the corner of Tahima and West Willow Street. The site is zone central commercial, is within the downtown area boundary overlay, so it is exempt from the parking requirements of the code. Section 18-55-030, number 17, allows for accessory uses, services to be clearly incidental to the sale of products on retail on the premises. So, while commissary isn't something that's listed specifically in the zoning code, it's in the health and safety code. You know, when we ever have other food facilities, we require them to be housed in a commissary. It's not listed in the zoning code. But we're considering this as accessory. I should note that in the resolution, the citation is for 50, not 55. It should be 18.55.030. The mobile business was approved on October 19th, 2022 with conditions of approval. We're again considering commissary as accessory to the mobile business, and this is subject to design review. If the use is approved, the building is subject to a building permit. And at the building permit stage, planning, building, public works will all review the plans for consistency with the planning commission approved, ADA compliance, encroachment permits, and all those other items happen at the building permit stage. You have a copy of the site plan and floor plan. You can see where the commissary will be located on the back half of the lot. The kitchen, storage room, a cold room, restroom, and presumably that would be where the food would be prepared for the truck. As far as design review, it's described as being painted pewter gray with a barn red roof. The planning commission may want to discuss that color scheme. We have prepared a planning commission resolution conducting a public hearing, finding exempt from CEQA, finding consistent with the general plan and municipal code, subject to conditions of approval which were inadvertently left out of the packet. Should have a copy of them now. And approve the use permit and our architectural review. I'm available for questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments right now?
I do. Which way? Is this no directional?
Oh.
So is this on the west side of the lot?
That would be the west side, yes.
Just curious. And the bathroom that's in there, that's for employees only?
That's my understanding. It does not appear that the public would be permitted in the building.
So, it looks like the porta potties are on the that end where this building's gonna go, so where the porta potty's gonna go is one of my questions. I was hoping we could maybe camouflage it a little bit, so they're just not right out there, because we're asking otherwise.
I don't believe we discussed the moving of the porta potty with the applicant. I know there is an environmental health regulation that it has to be so many feet
Yeah.
from, from the
Joseph on the alley.
Yeah, yep. So it's gotta be a certain distance with, from the, the mobile food unit itself. I can't recall the exact number. We could hear from the applicant on that, or we could, you know, if you wanted to make a condition to have it on the other side of the building, on the, the north side of the building, kinda away from the street, as long as it still meets that environmental health requirement. Or the applicant can speak to that, too. That's
No.
Yeah.
There, it appears that there's a restroom going in the building.
It would not be for, I don't believe they're allowed to have customers in that building. As that would be an employee restroom. I don't believe any customers will be allowed in the commissary area. It's for food preparation only, and that does land more on environmental health. I can check with them on that. So, but yeah, it would not be, these are for the preparation of the food to be served out of the truck. No food served in the commissary, so basically a kitchen, room for employees, a place to park their truck, prepare food, cook, you know, I think, believe cook as well, but no serving of food in the, the commissary itself. So it's not a restaurant or anything where customers would go into.
So they can't use that restroom for
I am sure of that, but I don't think the public is allowed. I can check with environmental health on that and see if it would meet the criteria, but I don't believe, I think there's issues with contamination.
Yeah, I would, I would expect that the public would not be allowed in the food preparation.
That was one of the questions I did not ask.
It would kinda be having public back in the kitchen of a restaurant, I guess, is a way to look at it.
Okay, it's, it's, I mean, it's clear in another area of the building, and so that's why my question.
Yeah, we can, we can double check and provide an answer to that.
I would love to see the porta potty go away.
Yeah, yep. It'd just be a matter of, if the applicant wants that, and if environmental health would allow that.
Can you bring up the floor plan again, like to see where the bathroom is in comparison to the, the whole layout?
You know how much space we have from the property line of that north side of where the building's gonna go?
I don't. Byron, I think you checked all the setbacks, though.
So I'm just wondering if there would be enough room, so if they're putting it, then they're gonna connect to the sewer for this bathroom.
Uh huh. Outside of it?
You know, I'm just
Yeah, that, that
Yeah, because the bathroom seems to be closer to the exit, right?
Yeah, so the emergency exit.
Question to ask if, you know, if the public could use it, or if there's a way to eliminate the
The porta potty and have it meet the requirement, because I think it'd definitely be within the distance as it's gonna be closer
Yeah.
to the mobile food truck, so we could follow up with environmental health and, and get that information.
Yeah, because I'm just curious. I mean, if they put it there and it's in a corner, it shouldn't be too hard to put
I don't think they would, might not happen to pay for the porta potty use as well, so.
They've been from there, too. I'm done for now. Well, I'm still listening. Thank you.
Okay, the first thing that, that I did was go back to the, the actual conditional use permit, the original one, because this is an amendment to it. And I have some questions. Number three, let's see. Well, my question is regarding the sign permit. There are currently four feather flags or pendant flags on the property that have been placed there that stay there 24/7. It was my understanding that actually those types of signs are a prohibited sign. Is that, do you have
We were going to discuss that with the applicant about making sure that those get removed when the business is not operating. And there's, there's nothing, as a permanent sign, it can't be used, as a banner can't be used, but as a temporary, it's okay.
So as long as they take them down?
So they should be, yeah, if they can take them down when they move the facility off the lot, that would
In the sign ordinance from, from something that I remember from years ago was that a business is allowed a sandwich board in the front of their store in addition to their regular signage. And there was a time when through the council, there was a modification, a temporary modification to that that allowed you to have two sandwich boards at your, have two sandwich boards, one of which you could put in front of your shop or store, and the other you could trade the second one with another store owner. And so you could actually be advertising your store in two different locations. And that ended in 20, or I don't remember, it ended in 2012, or that was the year that we did it. But my understanding is that these types of signs, these whole flag feather signs are actually a prohibited sign. Do you know if they are? And the reason why I'm asking Byron is because they're everywhere, and they're on city property, and they're just, they're popping up everywhere.
They're definitely not allowed on city property.
Pardon?
They're definitely not allowed on city property.
There are for other businesses on city property.
Byron, you, you said that they're not allowed on city property, right?
So, if it's, are we talking an easement or public right of way on city property?
Do you want particulars of where I know they are?
No, and
And I'm not talking, I know theirs are on their property, but around town, there are these banners, these banner type signage, feather signage, pendant signage. I mean, there's lots of different labels that go on them that are in city flower beds and so on and so forth. A lot of them say open, and they're there at 1 o'clock in the morning.
Okay, and we can
Signs on public property, if it's not authorized by the city council, are prohibited. So, we should discuss taking it up with the code enforcement department.
And we could definitely
I, I, I just wanted to throw out, we're getting dangerously far away from the agenda subject matter, so we need to try to keep the discussion on this specific project.
Thank you.
So, on, these are conditions from the past, from the first conditional use permit. Annual review, I, I don't think has been done, but we're reviewing it now. The handicap, the, the restroom, I guess, the rest, the porta potty that's there right now, I guess, will be addressed when you find out if they can use the restroom that's in the building as the restroom for the public. Otherwise, my question on that is, is it really a handy, is it handicap accessible? The existing porta potty.
Yeah, we can look into that. I'm not, I didn't note it in the picture, but there's larger rental ones available that are ADA accessible, so. But yeah, we need to look into that.
Service of potholes and broken concrete, and the ADA requirement for parking that meets ADA, ADA requirements. But you mentioned tonight that it's actually in the exempt parking zone, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So, that is, as a, although it was a condition, in the first use permit, it wouldn't apply now?
Which, which
The ADA parking and parking spaces.
Conditions?
Yeah, but it did look like that some repair had been done, and there is handicap parking on site.
Okay.
Yeah, they do have an ADA stall, and there's been asphalt patching of the lot.
I don't know exactly, as a, as a design review, everything that we are supposed to look at in its totality. And not having, not having the conditions of approval for, for this particular item, and having the time to really look over them makes it difficult to make a decision. So, drainage, for instance. Now, we're putting a building on this property that has the majority of its concrete.
I, I, yeah, for the drainage, I think because it's already a non-permeable surface, and they're not doing any grading or excavating, that it wouldn't really require a drainage plan as we're putting a building over the top of, of concrete that is already
Pouring a slab to the building?
That's the decision that the building official would make at the block permit stage, too, though. They were, they're the ones that look at impervious surfaces.
And I think the current, if I'm, I might be mistaken on that, but the current surface is concrete where they're planning the commissary, so the
I would assume that they'll be pouring a slab if they're putting in a restroom, and
Yeah, they would, but the we're not having, and again, that would be the building code if they were to acquire it, but we're not doing, I don't know how much grading work would need to be done, and if that would be a requirement of the, the building permit.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip a bunch of stuff that I had notes on, and number 13 on the conditions of approval that we're missing says that the design review standards and requirements, which that's what we're here for, in section 18 dash, or 18.141.050 and 18141.060, are some of the things that we need to look at. And it's hard, we don't know the answers to a lot of those things when it comes to design review. Number three, I'll find it here.
While you're looking, it does state that the building will be installed on a concrete foundation in the documents handed to us.
That, the only point I was bringing up is that it's, it's currently concrete. Yeah. But it's not that you're taking dirt and then Yeah. putting concrete. It's, it's an impermeable surface currently with another impermeable surface being added to it. And it may require a drainage plan, but
Say that
It, it's currently concrete, and yes, a concrete slab will be going in.
Sidewalk.
Yeah, so
With cracks and weeds.
And it's not a, it's not dirt going to concrete, so I don't know if a drainage plan would be quite, be required from the building department for that.
So with what, so are you, we're saying they're putting this building on the existing concrete?
They're putting concrete where concrete currently exists.
Okay, so they'll dig out the, the concrete that's there.
They'll take out
Have to to make a pad, right?
Yeah, they'll take out an impermeable surface, concrete, and then put back in an impermeable surface, which would be concrete.
Okay.
Yep.
So, and this was in my, my, this was, that was my question for the draining.
Yeah, yeah, just letting you know that it's, it's not, you know, currently dirt with the building going over it.
Right.
It'll be concrete coming out and assuming a pad going in.
And if, if the building official requires engineered calculations, they'll acquire it. That's not, that's not under the purview of the planning department. We're looking at the use.
Okay, so even though it says, states that on number 13, that we need to consider the design review standards and requirements in sections 18141.050 and 18.141.060, we really don't, because we don't have an elevation plan, or a parking circulation plan, or existing tree and foliage plan, or a landscape plan, so none of that, none, 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 nothing in the design review standards and requirements applies to us as a planning commission?
Well, we've provided, I believe there's photos in your packet.
And we're trying to be to where we, we don't want the applicant to go have, to go through paying for a full engineered plan and spec and all these surveys before they know that they're approved for the use, because it's a lot of money for an applicant to go have all these things figured out, and then to say, oh, well, you know, you guys don't allow a conditional use permit for this. So, it also states that the approval of this project shall be subject to the latest adopted ordinances, resolutions, policies, fees of the city of Willow. So, we're gonna work on, you know, obviously, putting additional thing in there for the conditional use for building, laying that out, that this will be subject to, you know, full plan check review, engineering, specification, all of the requirements for that, but we also don't want to create an undue burden to the applicant before they know that they'll be approved for the zoning of this. Understand the design review aspects of it. Not all of them applied. The addition, you know, the original, as this is an amendment to, as it's an accessory building, maybe those things would be more applicable at that timing, but we're, we're amending the original use permit to add a commissary to their operation.
And also I would add, if you want to add conditions to it, then we would enforce those on the building at the building permit stage.
Like landscaping, for instance.
If you wanted to add a condition that requires
Isn't that a part of a new build? I, I mean, that's where I'm so confused, because it was my understanding that if you're building something new, there's a landscape requirement. I'm not really sure where our purview is in this. What are we supposed to look at and approve? What are we approving? Are we just approving that they can put a building there?
So in the, in the res-
I'm sorry, I'm a little frustrated with this.
I would say, from our end, we're, we're getting the information of what the fans, you know, they put together. They still have to go through all the building requirements, all the city requirements. We're more on the zoning area, and can we help it move forward? That's part of our piece. They still have to go through all the building requirements that you're speaking of, any city requirements. But for us to help it move forward, I think more of us seeing what might come up as a problem, like you bring up. This might be a concern to the city or this condition. That's what I get at.
So, and the recommendation would be to, to adopt the attached resolution, so that literally is what you'd be approving. And that's, you know, stating that it's consistent with the purposes of the district in which the site is located. The proposed location of the use and conditions under which it may be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to public health, safety, welfare, and that the proposed use is in conformance with the general plan. There's other requirements and other conditions that can be placed on there. There is, you know, a diet, design review, because it is a, a building. The, you know, utilities and hookups and things like that are, are obviously gonna be addressed during building. So, the, the look, the fit with the, the zoning, the determination that it's an accessory use of the current mobile food trucks, those, I guess those are the kinds of things that we're looking to, you know, if you want to make them take out all the concrete and install landscaping, there's conditions that can be put on that, but conformance with the zoning and the use, it's an amendment to their food, mobile food truck trailer to put a commissary to park their mobile food truck in, and to prepare food. So I guess it's, does that use fit with the current zoning in central commercial as allowed by the conditional use permit?
But, I think I understand and agree with what you're saying, Holly, and I think some of it comes down to, we have to trust that it's gonna happen. You know, I mean, if landscaping is something that's required, then we want to know that that's gonna happen.
Yep.
You know, if signs, signs aren't supposed to be in certain places, we want to know they're not there. So when we approve things, we want to know what we're approving. We don't want to approve something and then drive down the street and see that
So currently, we're not requiring any landscape, and I think that's, you know, yes, it's a new building, but it's an accessory to the use permit as well. There was no requirement that hasn't been fulfilled under the original regarding landscaping. So, as it, you know, it's an amendment to as an accessory building. If there's requirements that call for that, then we would, but if the original use permit did not call for any landscaping upgrades, I don't know what we, why we'd be looking at that as an accessory unit to the original business.
This just feels so, I mean, it's being called an amendment to a conditional use permit that was a food truck and a canopy, and we're built, we're putting up a building that's I mean, it seems like it would be a whole, not, not, not an amendment to that use permit, but a whole new project, because it's 20 times the size of what they're doing.
Yep.
I mean, I don't know.
The definition we're using is just, the, the conditional use permit is allowed because it is an accessory to the food truck, which is the, there's no public eating there, and yes, I get it, it's a total, it's a building. Right, so, the, the accessory to the mobile food unit is the, is the part of the municipal code that we're using to define what this is, because it's not a new business. It's an operation to assist in the business. There's already a commissary that they go to. It's just not located on their site. They have to have moved that food truck somewhere else. They have one already. This is just allowing to have them on the property where their food truck exists. So yeah, I get it, it's a bigger building than what the mobile food truck is. But the, the use permit was granted to the mobile food truck, and this is being looked at as an accessory part of that business.
You know, so, what about, like, the business next door, Inwell? Any concerns from, on their end?
The notice was given, standard notice was given, 300 feet with the property, and and we haven't received any comments from anybody. I mean, we got comments from, from the water vendor health, but nothing from the public, except for some comments from Miss Pride.
Anything else for the public? I think she need, looking to speak, yeah?
Yeah, and you, we can open up the public hearing at any time, too, as well, if you guys don't have any more questions directly to ask.
I'm gonna open it up at 6:29. We are now coming to the public input portion of the hearing. This public hearing is being recorded. Subject to the possible review by the courts, therefore all statements or remarks must be made clearly, distinctly into the microphone. There is anyone in the audience who has any print and evidence or opinions or statements relevant to issues being heard, please step up to the microphone and all those not required. It's also requested that you please state, spell your name for the record. Comments are generally limited to three minutes. 6:29.
Lori Pride, resident of the city of Willow. You know, the, the focus I've had on that has just been more procedural, as I've looked through this packet, and I'm a little disappointed. I think it is confusing Um, I think it is confusing to me whether we're talking about a use permit and strictly talking about the use of a commissary as an accessory or are we talking design review? The packet clearly tries to do both in the same packet. Specifically the conditions of approval, which unfortunately were not made available until late this afternoon, um, references you to the architectural review portion of the code. And in that portion of the code, it talks about the required information that must be in a design review. So your packet was really teed up with design review. You had a design review analysis in there. And yet tonight I'm hearing that we're not talking about design tonight because we don't know the answers to many of your questions because we haven't submitted it to building. We haven't submitted it to engineering. We haven't heard from environmental health. So if I was sitting in your shoes as a commissioner, I'd be saying, okay, are you asking me to only focus on, excuse me, on the use, which is saying is a commissary building, a two thousand square foot addition to the property, a use that you in the eyes of the commission feel meet the intent as outlined in your conditions of the municipal code, health, safety, welfare, those things that were iterated by your planner. I mean, that's a question, but the caveat to that question is you're also being told you can put conditions on that. But you don't have answers to any of your questions about what's even required by the city code for parking, for drainage, for the building code, for the elevations. You're not able to see what this is gonna actually look like when it's, when it's there and you're not able to see what's really gonna be required by the other codes. So you can say, in theory, we may be acceptable to a accessory use of a, of a commissary. But we are talking about brand new building and in my mind, that fits the code that you have to follow the requirements for a brand new building. And for your purview, that's your architectural review board hat. So you could consider saying, we, um, are not opposed to the use, but it's subject to coming back to the commission for a full design review per the municipal code, where you want to see architectural elevations, you want to see a parking plan, you want to see the ADA requirements. When I asked for a copy of the current conditional use permit, and again, I have no issues with the business, but it's permitted with an annual review by the commission. Have you as commissioner seen this in a year? It was approved in November of twenty twenty-two. Did it come before you? As a, as an annual review, and this is procedural, this would be about any use permit you have here in the city. My other, other specific comment, some I ran out of time, is under the existing use permit where you only had a food trailer and, and seating and they went away every night. You were required to remove any daily trash. Well, that same condition is before you tonight and they're saying now we're gonna have a full commissary, all of our food prep, all of our storage, all of our everything is going on. And there's no requirement for any kind of a waste receptacle. I do believe the bathroom there currently does not meet ADA requirements. That's a condition of the current permit. When I looked at it, it does not appear to be wheelchair accessible. Um, I don't think there's a ramp to, but I don't believe the surface would meet ADA requirements. So procedurally, I think this packet had a lot of issues. If I was sitting in your seats, I'd refer it back to staff for a better packet. Thank you for your time.
Any, um, remarks after that?
Well, I would like to do that.
Okay, so I'm going to close it if there's no more public, uh, comment at six thirty-three. Oh, yep. All right. Any questions or?
I'm with, I'm, I'm with referring it back to staff. There's some things that I would, I would like to, I guess, say now so that maybe you can come back to us with that. Um, the red roof, for instance, is not a color that's, uh, allowable or permitted in our code.
That can be, so that's not a predetermined allowable color? That's your guys' decision that it can be brought to the planning commission and accepted by you guys?
Or is that?
So that-
Is that now? Is that later?
Yes.
I mean, I just, I'm sorry, I'm-
Yeah.
Um, and landscaping. So, um, I, so I guess I would say I would like to refer this back to staff and include landscaping in the plan.
If, if it's referred back to staff, what's the, what's the extension of this project?
Um, uh, we could probably get it on the next monthly, maybe, um, depending on the extent. If you guys are gonna require full plans and specs or grading, you know, drainage plans, things of that nature, that's gonna come probably with a heavy cost and a big timeline. So I guess it would depend on the requirements of what you would want to see in, in the design review, uh, process. Mainly, we wanted to get to the design review process because of the colors, uh, because, you know, that's been an issue. Um, and then, you know, the main point of it, like Lori brought up, was the, uh, you know, for us, was making sure that the zoning works, uh, that this is considered an accessory to it. But we wanted to give you the opportunity for the design review, um, for the color, for the, for the look of it, if you had comments on it. Um, do you, do you want us to look to see if there's landscaping requirements when having an accessory building to an existing use permit? The fact that there wasn't for the original would, would lend me to say that there was a mistake on the original because you would require that. And I know once a mobile-
Wasn't a building permit, that's different.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm looking at the designer, the designer, it says landscaping should be well designed. It doesn't say landscaping should be required. So there's no landscaping proposed at this point. Um, if that's something that you wanted to require, then we would make a note of it for digital approval.
I mean, it's pretty much, I think, all concrete except for the squares out front?
I think, uh, I think the main concern like was voice, I think twice, um, is leaning to see the visual of like, what is it, what's gonna be there? Um, you know, is it gonna meet everything? But on your guys' end, I hear is, well, give them a chance and then they still have to go through the whole process.
They're, they're gonna have to do that and what, so again, I'm gonna go back to the, if we had them all fully approved for plans and specs and they've spent thousands of dollars going through a plan check process or multiple thousands of dollars before they came to you guys, and then it was said to be, no, that's not a compatible use?
Yeah.
So for a conditional use permit where it's at the purview of the council to approve that, we feel that that's kind of just an unreasonable burden to the applicant. I mean, we can show detail, we can, we can try to provide information, but full calculated plan sometimes, um, you know? And landscaping, like if it was a requirement, I mean, if they didn't have to, well, you do have to have landscaping, water systems engineered now. But, you know, we could show the layout to you guys, the site, the, the information is, it's gonna say exactly how it looks with, with the building. It's identified with pictures and the color and trim with it, and that's what we wanted to bring to you guys. It's gonna be in a location. Um, it's gonna be the metal building with a pewter gray and a red roof. Um, and it's gonna sit in the location as shown on the site map. So we can provide additional information if you guys require that information, I guess, we can look into if it's required, um, in addition to landscaping. So we can, we can look into those things, um, and maybe kind of try to, I don't know if we would be able to come back on the next special meeting with the, with the-
I would say, cause we have a special meeting next week.
We wouldn't be able to do another public hearing, but I think we may be able to provide some additional information at that meeting if you wanted to see it. So we can, we can look into requirements of a permanent structure a little further and see if there is anything, um, that they need to comply with and come back with that, or are there other additional things that?
Cause I'm on the end of like, you know, not having them spend money, but at the same time, uh, you know, going through the process of like unanswered questions. Um, and what's the best spot to go about that?
So seeing what's required for the central commercial district when building a building then.
Can, yeah, open you back up. I'm gonna back it up at six thirty-eight.
So just in light of the conversation, I think it's when you, it's an opportunity, if you're having a new building constructed that now gives some opportunity for the city to say, what do we want this to look like? That's the purpose of our design review. So if you're gonna put a new building as an accessory use, it's still a new building. So when I look at what's presented, I can't really tell what that looks like because I'm only seeing partial side of a building. I'm not seeing what it might actually, I'm not seeing the whole building in a picture. I'm only seeing little side of the walls. It shows gray with a little bit of red trim. Doesn't show me anything with the windows. The windows are facing the parking lot to the north. There's just a big gray wall facing the, the road, the way it's presented. So there's no landscaping. The current parking lot is the way it's always been, but is this an opportunity to make it better? There is another dirt area there and it's because all the concrete's missing on the, on the southeast corner. You know, so it's, is, is it a trip hazard? Is it, is it a safety issue? And I'm not to put excessive burden on someone, but I think those are the opportunities to look at this and say, if we say, I don't have an issue with adding the commissary as a citizen and making it better for the, the business, but it, it needs to look appropriate and it needs to be an opportunity to make it look better. So if we're just gonna put a metal building up, pre-engineered by the way, so hopefully it's not thousands of dollars in site plans because they come pre-engineered. Um, and it's still a porta potty sitting outside that has to be accessible, that it's bumpy to get there. Is there an opportunity? And that to me is the design review part. So for me, this process bringing it to you tonight is just a use? We've muddied the waters with giving you all these things. Well, tell us what you think about design. But we, we don't know what it's gonna look like. So tell us what you think. Well, we don't know what they propose because there's nothing to look at. So I think there's a way for them to give you a visual without spending thousands of dollars, you know, a mock-up that you could even get the picture of the, the metal building. Maybe show a picture with the windows, maybe think about the aesthetics and how the windows may be facing the street so it's not a big blank wall. Landscaping would soften this, this strategic, very visual corner lot in our central commercial district. So we don't just have a, half the time a big gray metal building with no landscaping, cracked pavement and a cover. And then during the day, there's a food truck, but it's just, to me, it's the aesthetics is what we're looking at. If we have an opportunity to make it better without making it cost prohibitive, trying to do, let's meet everybody in the middle. And that's what feels broken about tonight. There's nothing for you to respond to. So how can you as five people go, well, I want a tree and I wanted this. I think the applicant has an opportunity to hear what you've said tonight and say, we, we want to make your town better. We want to make our lives easier by having a commissary. So we wanna, you know, do what we can do to, to beautify that spot and make it an appealing part of Willows. So I think there's a win-win here and I think we're, we're battling over some semantics. But I think being able to provide some kind of a visual rendering for the commission to look at and what this is gonna look like. But alls I've heard when you've asked questions is we don't know until it goes to building. Well, we don't know until it goes to environmental health. So do we have an interior bathroom? Do we have a porta potty? Do we want to have porta potties? I mean, if there's building a permanent structure, they're making their business more permanent. It's not so mobile now. Now they're partially permanent and partially mobile on the same parcel. So maybe we want a permanent bathroom for the public. And if they're gonna do a sewer connection anyway, because they're gonna have to do a sewer connection, there's not one there. Perfect opportunity. So let's not sell ourselves short, which I've lived here forever. We do that over and over and over again. We don't take advantage of the opportunity to make it right, working with, with our business because we want to make it better for you, but we want to make it better for everyone else at the same time from a visual perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, back, uh, closing at six forty-three.
I've got one, just a point of clarification. It, it, we did get comments on environmental health and they have no comments about the visual. They want to know about, they, they're, they're concerned about the food permit.
But the visual is something that we as a planning commission do look at. So I would like to see a visual, very much so. I appreciate everything you just said and I also think it's a perfect opportunity to try to get bathrooms, you know, and get rid of the porta potties.
And that'll be something we'll talk to environmental health about as well, if it's required, if they can do that or, or cannot do that. So that'll be probably more of a, a code issue. So we'll clarify that with environmental health, if, if public's allowed to use the commissary bathroom.
And if not, then maybe build one on the outside because you got the plumbing right there.
Yeah, it's a new build.
What's that?
I said, it, it, but be able to maybe put a-
Another, uh, one outside and not have the porta potty?
Yeah, because you're gonna have the plumbing right there for that other one to be on that.
Yep.
My guess is one with a door to the outside only that doesn't go in.
That's right, that doesn't go in, yes. Just on the outside and outside when, like when you go to.
Um, could that be a condition if we move this forward, could we, the visual piece and some of the, you know, unleft questions?
Can we send it back to staff with, with additional information requested?
Yeah, so you'd like to see, so in addition to the, like the side pictures and everything, you want, you would like to see an actual full-scale, uh, like rendering of the building, if possible?
See what we're approving.
I'm, I'm just asking what you want to see to do that. So like the full building, a full-
Like if we said yesterday, how much progress does he make, uh, in, in just the layout? Like if we said yesterday, could that be just him designing what it's gonna look like?
Is there gonna be a design review or just it?
Like what would be the first phase of, uh, if we said yesterday of him and his project? Could it be that he designs and gets all these questions answered?
He would have full plan review and, uh, and yeah, specifications provided to the engineering department. Uh, but we have no problem if you guys want to see additional information. I just want to make sure I'm clear on what, what you want me to bring back to you guys. Um, because yes, it's the use permit, but, um, it is a brand new building. Um, so-
And it is, it is subject to our-
Architectural review, yep.
Yeah.
And so you had mentioned, you had mentioned li- landscaping? Someone said something about the bathrooms?
Yeah.
So, and, and we're just looking at what the applicant proposes for landscaping?
Yes, what he, what he proposes, kind of what his vision is?
Okay.
Of that? What the building's gonna look like?
Maybe a full.
Yeah, not just the side panels, an actual full three T, three D, but not like, not like a stamped architectural anything.
Like my futuristic mind thinks is like, does he even want to look into the review of what it could be to look at a surveying out of that building in the future, you know?
Then you'd have to go through a different process. You'd have to do a change of use for the building. There'd be all other-
So those are the kind of things, information, even just to guide him of like, you know, right now you have this. Do you have any other plans of maybe making it, you know, where it's in the building and what that would look like, what the cost would be? I don't know, just to give him an idea, because if the building's gonna be permanent, why not enhance it in the future?
Would the city be opposed to putting some trees on the boulevard?
We're really trying to put, get away from putting a lot of any landscaping just due to the sidewalk problems it's having. So we're kind of revising that whole issues as all of our sidewalks are a lot of despair. Uh, so we might be, um, not opposed to them planning certain, I mean, we've got a master tree list. Um, so the applicant's-
The city's property.
It's-
That's what I'm looking at from here.
Gotcha. Property, yeah, if it's the actual city property and not a right of way, then we can look into doing that.
I mean, that would help to soften that, that south wall of that building on the street.
Mm-hmm.
Trees on the boulevard.
So, you know, it was just the-
So we have bathrooms, landscaping? Do we want to talk about color or do we wait till next time?
Well, I, I think we should just, we're looking at keeping things earthbound, right? So I mean, I think that should be noted so that, to help them. I don't think we should, I think we should stop color just a little bit. I have, actually have a pamphlet that they're gonna be looking at. Hmm, my personal opinion is I like colors. I'd like to see more colors, brighter colors, colors. I feel like we're too draft, but that's me.
Anything else?
We're not really, we have really anything today, I mean, so.
I know that, that the applicant is here, right? Is there anything you just think?
Um, do you guys want to say anything? Um, any marks? Ten algo que decir, uh, sobre el proyecto, yo lo puedo decir en inglés si necesita. Porque ahorita le están agarrando el plan más o menos para agarrar una idea, cómo se va a ver. Um, all I'm saying is I'm just trying to get an idea of what the visual's gonna be. Um, para saber cómo se va a ver su edificio, ¿no?, para que tengan más, más idea. Okay. Sí, entonces, eh, lo que vas a pasar es mandarlo para atrás poquito para que no dé más información. I'm just gonna tell, tell them we're gonna, you know, staff it, so they get more information in return for that.
And, and so I just want to go through it one more time, make sure I got everything, if that works for you guys. So we want to look into, uh, the use of a private bathroom, whether it's the bathroom they're installing or one that could be put on the outside of it, outside of the, the food preparation area. Um, and at least moving the porta potty to a, a, a location if that's not available. Yeah, what the, uh, what the applicant will be proposing for landscaping and the possible- Yeah, what the, uh, what the applicant will be proposing for landscaping and the possibility of city, uh, planting trees in those, uh, if they're city-owned, um, property, and then a full-dimensional design picture of the, the building itself, as, as best as we can produce of that.
Oh, and the garbage.
Yeah, so would you like to see what they're propos, like, additional service for garbage? Uh, like, if they're proposing a three-yard bin now because of more waste?
This type of building, when it goes into building review and all that, and what those requirements are gonna be, I would assume that something in environmental health.
Yeah, most likely, and I think we've got city ordinances that require, you know, that they, they prove that they have waste pickup. But, and I know we've had other buildings where it's, I think, location of bins has been addressed, um.
Cause I don't know if this is gonna trigger, like, McDonald's, we've got a natural place for the dumpster.
Serve to go into. We'll look into that from environmental health then and see if there's a, a waste bin requirement size or if they're, you know, good to keep their regular trash bins on the side of it. So I can check with Jay on the, the waste requirements, should be able to not have a long wait on that.
Yeah. We're good?
Yeah, I just, I ate dinner there tonight and I love their food. I don't want them to feel that this is negative towards them in any way.
I think, um, we'll move forward with the project just with some of the questions answered.
Yeah, absolutely, so we'll, we'll continue then till the next available meeting, that, that's where we go.
All right, I'm gonna go on to B, conditional use permit, file number CUP twenty-four dash zero-five, ten seventy West Wood Street, Suite D.
Thank you, this next item, use permit twenty-four, twenty-four dash zero-five, ten seventy West Wood Street, Willow's Jiu-Jitsu and MMA. It is located, like I said, ten seventy Willow Street in the existing building that's shared by other businesses. The zoning is site, uh, the site is zone entryway. Um, the applicant did receive a use permit for a different location, but use permits run with the land, not with the use. So when the location moved, um, they needed a new, a new use permit. Um, we've reached sign engine parking, it meets all the standards, the, the use is actually in there now. Um, we notified them that they needed, that their use permit did not transfer from their old site to the new site. Um, signage and parking meets standards. It's section eighteen dash fifty to oh-three-oh in the entryway zone that states martial arts or exercise studios need a use permit. It is consistent with the entryway zone, and we've prepared a planning commission resolution to conduct a public hearing to find a exempt from CEQA, consist, find it consistent with the general plan municipal code, subject to the conditions of approval and approve the use.
Yeah, questions on?
So they're there, the, the signs are all, everything that's in this packet is showing what's already happened, right? There's nothing.
Yeah, and we, and we confirm that the, uh, signs do meet standards. That was really the only, only thing that we ever.
There's nothing, nothing added or new, it's, it's, it's there, it's done.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
So, any other questions? Not a kind of call or motion?
I make a motion to approve a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Willow's.
Uh, we gotta do, open it up.
Oh, sorry about that, my bad. Jumped that, jumped the gun on that one. It's been a long day. Opening the public hearing, um, I'm now kind of the public input portion of the hearing. Public hearing is being recorded, subject to possible review. By the course, therefore, all statements or remarks must be made clearly and succinctly into the microphone. If there's anyone in the audience who has any current evidence or opinions or statements relevant to issues being heard, please step to the microphone. And although it's not required, it's requested that you please state and spell your name. For the record, comments are generally limited to three minutes. Six fifty-four. Any comments on this? And, we are good, I will close it up at six fifty-four. Now, we got the motion.
I make a motion to approve a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Willow's granting the approval of conditional use permit, file number CUP dash two-four dash oh-five to allow the establishment of Willow's Jiu-Jitsu and MMA at the property located at ten seventy West Wood Street, Suite D. Assessor's parcel number zero-zero-one dash one-three-two dash zero-zero-four within the entryway zone.
I'll second it.
Okay, all is favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Opposed, abstained, all right, motion pass. Moving on to our comments and reports, commission comments or reports?
Oh, I get to start.
You, you get to start.
Okay, no, mine, just one comment, I unfortunately was out for two meetings, and so I'm back. And, uh, I do know the colors have come through, again, just, I'd like to see more colors on our color board instead of us having to approve everything, all the colors. I'd like to see a broader range.
Have you talked to, um, to Maria and about, um, the direction, about going through the, the color deck and?
You got, you, did you receive one of the, um, one of the swatches?
Uh, whatever was in the packet.
Packet, okay, so those were the example colors, all, uh, we need to, we'll get the swatches off, I believe.
I don't know if you all didn't get them.
Pedro, I believe, and Maria.
I'll bring mine to.
Okay, yeah, and just bring them by the office, and then we'll get them over to Maria and Pedro. So it's a, it's a neutral color selection, so. Yeah, Maria, sorry, I forgot you weren't at that meeting, so there are additional ones in that Sherwin-Williams, a lot more, honestly, so, yep.
Yeah, I'd like to see.
Yep, yep.
Something to brighten up a few things, I don't want neon, but I do want.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll try to bring that to the, uh, the September planning meeting, the next regular scheduled one, but we'll get to those guys, the swatches as soon as possible to review.
Uh, I might not be here, uh, at the next meeting, my baby's due around that date, so. Oh, sorry, not next week's meeting, but September. I, I figured that's what you were talking about, right? You said September.
Well, if you're gonna miss a meeting, I think a baby's a perfectly viable excuse on that one. We won't, we won't hold you over the flame on that one.
We'll zoom you in.
Um, I'm just. I'm just gonna say, uh, thank you to everybody who puts in the work, sets up the meetings, um, public. I know it's a process, um, but I think ultimately, we want growth in the city and we want, you know, progress. Uh, so I appreciate everybody's input, um, and I think we will move forward with, um, especially item one, and, uh, you know, looking better. Um, but yeah, besides that, first day of school, back, so that was all good. Okay, uh, now we have, um.
I, I got one more thing to say, so, uh, part of, I think, the issue is with people coming in, um, a lot of times their first time people, they don't know that there's an actual process. I don't know if we can get that information out, um, I'm trying where I work that. You know, you need to go to these places first to make sure everything's gonna work before you go and buy plans, before you go do anything because you wanna make sure it's all gonna, but a lot of people don't, I buy a piece of property, why can't I do that?
Yeah.
They don't know about the zoning, they don't know about a lot of things, so I don't know how we can help people with that process, but if we could figure out a way, that would be fantastic.
That's a challenge everywhere.
I know it is, I know it is.
And we, through the permit process, we're, we're trying to improve the clarity of, you know, make it easier for people to understand, I know that's not getting them to come in, but, but doing outreach and other things, um, and, and through enforcement, unfortunately, is sometimes the, the way that we, we do that. But there's also getting the information out, right? And we can always do a better job of that.
Yeah, but, you know, like I said, not everybody knows, and they don't know where to start, and they just start, and then, next thing you know, they run into these things they didn't know, I don't know how to fix it.
If the, the business license triggers those, those kinds of review processes with planning and everything, so if they go to get a business license, we would, we would put them through that review process and at that point, let them know. If they don't obtain the business license, that's, that's where we've kind of been dealing, um, on the enforcement side with.
Right. Gotta catch my.
Yep, absolutely.
So someone had mentioned to me the other day that the business life, the issuance of a business license was actually at the, and, and, and that way, actually, the city had a little bit of teeth in, in.
Yes, it is, yeah, so, when you, when you go to apply for a business license, right now it's contracted with HDL. So the applicant would fill out, put in all their information for the business license through HDL. We wouldn't even be involved in the process at that point, it would be all through a third-party company. Then it goes to an approval portal for us, and that's when we come into it. So we'll get an email notification stating that, uh, use, uh, a jiu-jitsu place is coming in, and they want, their address is listed as one-zero-three-zero Wood Street. So we would look at zoning, so the first step is planning, so we go planning, building, fire, police department if needed. We don't always do all of those if it's not. But then planning's notified, so Byron, I look at it, talk about it, see if it needs a conditional use permit, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't issue anything, uh, basically, we have to click done on our end in order for them to get issued the business license. Got a couple instances with, with mobile food trucks over by Taheman Wood Street, and down that, we've talked to them. Their issue was that environmental health is not involved in our portal. We've now worked with environmental health to make sure they're not issuing any food permits. Um, even with contingencies, they're not giving the actual license, um, because that just led to confusion of those people having food permits. They've came in, we've talked to them, um, they've came in and talked to the office, so as a staff update, they'll eventually be coming forward or working with it if it's a, an allowable use to the planning commission. Um, but if that business license process is started, we're, we're reviewing that and letting them know that they need a conditional use permit, or no, you can't do that there off, off the gate, and then.
Notifying them what they need to do.
Know, what they need to do, yep, yep, absolutely, or, you know, if you pick a new spot, you can have it here, kind of thing, whatever, whatever it is.
For the license just triggers.
Just triggers the, the planning review and all that, all of that kind of stuff, so it is a nice way of catching it, and that, yes, they do not get issued the business license until everything's approved. And we'll be hopefully bringing that business license back in house sooner than later, um, which will give us additional upfront control to speak to the applicant and before they get too far along in the process, but.
And other staff comments and reports?
I think I pretty much did it, uh, on that one, um, we got our special meeting coming forward, um. Other than that, like I said, we did some business license checks on a couple reports we had on the taco truck at Diamond Gas Station, and then also a, um, mobile kind of drink cart down by Casa Ramos, and both of those applicants have came into the office and filed for the business license and are in the review process currently. Other than that, Byron, anything? You, so Jack in the Box has made, they're currently just working with Caltrans on their encroachment permits. Yep, so, haven't heard back from them, they wanted to really get going this fall and finish out before the end of the year, but they're working with Caltrans, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but they're highly motivated still, which I was happy to, like I said, happy to hear. Um, sounds like final stretches, but things, not saying the Caltrans is always slow, but things can get held up on that, so. Uh, but we'll check in with them, I don't know if I'll have any answers at the next special meeting, but I'll, we'll check back in with them and see, see where they're at with it, still on plan, but they're, they're acting like they're really wanting to go forward at this point, so.
Anyone else? Not, I am going to close the meeting at seven oh-three.